And they're going to give us an update on what the progress the court has made in the last eighteen months. Since the judge has been here, so I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to get us started.
Mayor, City Council, thank you very much for affording us this opportunity to focus on our court, bring your focus into it and see what we've done. The current state of our court is it is strong, it is efficient, with an increased capacity to grow as we go into the future. Before we really dive into this, I really want to just highlight what some of my personal goals are for our court as we go forward. One, to safeguard individual rights, provide efficient, effective and fair service, promote rehabilitative and restorative opportunities, collaborate with community partners such as you all, and enhance public safety. Now, before we really get into it, let's take a moment and talk about what are the main differences between a municipal court like ours and that of the state court system. One of the big main differences between a municipal court like ours and the state court is, take a look at your right to speedy trial. State court system, speedy trial is limited at one hundred and eighty-two days. However, when you come into our courthouse here, our prosecutor is limited to ninety-one days, as opposed to that one hundred and eighty-two days. So it's a much quicker turnaround time, and if our cases aren't able to be brought to trial prior to the expiration of that ninety-one days, they get dismissed. So things go a lot quicker in the municipal court than over at the state court. In addition to that, another grand difference is with our municipal court is really its convenience for the parties. We're centrally located right here within the community. And as opposed to the Jefferson County Court, which oversees the city of Wheat Ridge, obviously, that's located out in Golden. And now imagine for one moment that you happen to be a resident of Jefferson County, but you live on the far south end of that very massive county. You might be driving over an hour to get into a court up the street. Whereas here, Wheat Ridge is much smaller, we're local, and we're centralized, so we're friends and families. The time that we have on dockets in the municipal court, we have a lot more time on dockets to be able to understand the cases that come before us here. That allows us to take input and listen to local stakeholders like you all here in this room, and also to really see the impact of our decisions on the individual defendants and also the community as well. We get to see that with much greater ease than we do in the state court system. Another difference between municipal courts and state court system is really the difference in sentencing considerations. We're dealing with matters of local concern here, whereas you're not going to get that personalized personalized sort of touch that you would, excuse me, in the state court system as opposed to the municipal court system. So those are some of the grand differences. Now, as they take a look back, twenty twenty-three, prior to me ever being on board, obviously, this council adopted an administrative management model and really works for us. That is because we have a part-time court docket, but the courthouse and its staff are available five days out of the week. But, Judge like myself, because we don't have a full-time docket, I'm not here all five days out of the week. So as a result, this administrative management model really works well for us because Roxanna can be with our court when I'm not there. Now, today, obviously, we've got Roxanna Caldwell-Tillery who spearheads this administrative management model. She's here with us today. I thank her for her support, but I want to take it back in time a little bit. So go back about nine months ago or so, we're going through the interviewing process as we are interviewing folks to fill the new court administrator's position, and I'm at home one night. And I get a phone call on my phone, it's from a phone number I don't recognize. I answer it, it's a colleague of mine, Judge Brian Bowen. Judge Bowen retired off the Adams County bench, now serves as a municipal court judge as well. He calls me up and says, Jonathan, I understand that you're interviewing folks for your court administrator's position, and one of those folks is Roxanna. I can't speak highly enough of her. I can't. He was singing her praises. And that made me realize that we actually did have a gem as far as Roxanna goes. Judge Bowen's opinion carries a lot of sway with me. I worked in front of him as a young lawyer, and now obviously I sit in the municipal court benches with him as well. So with that, like I said, we have a really big gem, and that is Roxanna. She brings her leadership and her experience to us with so much zeal and so many great ideas. And in a spirit of collaboration, she asks us to think outside of the box and examine a lot of our processes and procedures. But I want to give you a little bit of a, a little bit of a bio, just briefly for her, because I think it really speaks to that zeal and that experience. So Roxanna worked for about twelve years over in the state court system up in Jeffco. She worked in the jury commissioner's office, then as a court clerk, in the county courts, and then also in the district court as well. She was up there for about twelve years. And then shortly thereafter, her really, really her most transformative work, I think that really benefits the city of Wheat Ridge, came when she worked as a court administrator up in the city of Greeley. It's one of the busiest municipal courts up in northern Colorado. And there, she led the development of a new court operation from the ground up, designing the workspace layout for a new courthouse, advocating for appropriate spacing, security features, ensuring proper technology placement, and she implemented a lot of major technological improvements while she was up there as well. There's just so much you can say about her, but now that today, as she's working here as a court administrator in Wheat Ridge, she brings that same energy that I talked about, the zeal, the leadership, forward-thinking approach. And she's deeply involved in modernizing our court's processes, implementing new technologies and strengthening interdepartmental collaboration, and ensuring that the municipal court system remains accessible, efficient, and grounded in the values of public service. So that's who, that's the gem that we have in Roxanna here. I'm very, very pleased to have her here and have her support and frankly, her friendship as well. Since taking the bench about a year and a half ago, in your packets, we gave quite a bit of information about some of the changes that we've made to the court at that time. So one of the first things that I did when I took the bench, I did a warrant, we took about a whole day or two, sat down in our back file room and went through old files, looking to see if these were cases that still needed to be opened, whether or not they would even have any luck being prosecuted if we brought them up. And also noticing that there were just some warrants that needed to get rid of because there had been recent changes in the law. Those warrants would likely not be valid any further, and so really cleaned up a large portion out of that file room there and got rid of those warrants that no longer needed to be active. Another big issue from the police side, we had a very big problem of people failing to appear at the trial. And that's a big problem for a number of reasons, but especially for if we have jurors coming, if we have our officers coming in to testify. And everyone is sitting there waiting for the defendant to show up, and lo and behold, a lot of them weren't showing up. And we just wasted a lot of time from the community members, perhaps coming in from a jury, from our officers who were present, perhaps on a day off or when they could be perhaps using their time better while out on patrol, only to have wasted an entire morning. So one of the things that I ended up doing, and it's really turned it around, I implemented a methodology that we use in the state court system. That is, I set up a status conference, typically about a week before the trial. Status conference, status conference, what does that mean? It's exactly what the name says. What's the status of this case? Are we actually going to be going to trial or not? And as soon as we implemented that, we were able to resolve the majority of those cases prior to trial, and thereby eliminating those failures to appear at trial and not wasting any time from the communities and our witnesses showing up to trial only to be turned away. So that was a really big, a really big change, and we've cleared up a lot of those trials at this point. Another big issue that we recognized, our probation department was highly underutilized. And to give you an idea of what it was when I first came in, our probation officer at that time, Madeline, I believe she only had three active probation points under her belt at that time. We just weren't utilizing them. So one of the things that I did was, I want to really start utilizing our full-time probation officer here and getting them the clientele that they need to be able to supervise. And I think right now, our current probation officer whom we just hired on, Brenda, I believe she has a caseload of roughly about twenty-six active cases at this point in time. So we've been slowly building it up. But it is a far cry from where it was when I first came in, when we had maybe only three active, right at the, at my beginning. One of the ways that I've been able to utilize our probation department greater as well, we've been using what we call PSIs, pre-sentence investigation reports, okay? For lack of better words, what does that mean? I always tell folks, think of it like a job interview for probation, okay? If I take your guilty plea here today, don't worry, we're going to set this matter out about five weeks for sentencing. During that time, you're going to sit down with our probation officer and they're going to conduct this interview. It is really helpful because it provides me the background to really understand how perhaps I can tailor a sentence much better and much more informed for a defendant, and whether or not probation is a good fit for that. Maybe it is, maybe it isn't. Because I like to tell folks, especially the juveniles, the value in doing the PSI is that right now, I don't know a whole lot about you. I know the allegations, I know what you admitted to, and I'd have a copy of the police report. That's not a lot of information, especially when sentencing a juvenile. So those PSIs have been fantastic. It has helped really support getting more clients into probation and hopefully trying to find the resources that they need. And whether it's classes, community service, are they having troubles at home, how are they doing in school? It allows us to get copies of their school reports and talk to those folks as well. So really, I love those PSIs. Another issue that we took up, fingerprinting, actually. We never fingerprinted it out of our court before. And you might ask, well, why is fingerprinting important? Fingerprinting is important because, you know, if you don't get your fingerprints done, you likely just got a ticket. You came into court, took a plea, but that plea might not actually go anywhere without those fingerprints. When you get your fingerprints done, we report the conviction off to the Colorado Bureau of Investigation, and now the CCIC, that's Colorado Background Information for Law Enforcement, now we can recognize and see that you do have a history. Why is that important, especially in a municipal court? Because the large majority of our cases here are theft cases. And if you're not reporting off those convictions, if you come into another municipal court or you come back to our court without that background information and those fingerprints, I might be just seeing this as your first offense as opposed to your tenth. And so that is important when it comes to communicating with other courts, law enforcement, as far as what this individual's criminal history background may be. So we're doing fingerprinting now, so thank you all from the police. Angel over in records has been wonderful with that as well. Roxanna, you're my hero. We got the collection agency up that I've wanted for so long in this case. Historically, we didn't have a collection agency, and those efforts of collecting were really left on the shoulders of our staff. And we had cases that years and years ago that we couldn't collect. We got a collection agency finally in place, you can take that burden away from our staff, and we're actually starting to see them now paying. That's wonderful. So thank you for that, Roxanna. Another one of my goals, and I think you're seeing it in action here tonight, is really to try and bridge the gap that maybe exists between important stakeholders like you all and you all with our court. And I think that's important when I say there's a gap. I don't mean there is a gap necessarily. The reasons why there might be a gap are not, are not that, not what I'm saying. For example, a lot of our officers now, because they're not coming in to testify for trial, we perhaps have quite a significant number of new officers that may not even be familiar with it. They may not know that, hey, we can write into the court, come meet the judge, come get to know us. And so that's what I say, bridging that gap. I want to make sure that you all know what's going on in your courthouse, the good things that we're doing. And with that in mind, tomorrow, we are inviting you all to come over to our open courthouse. From eleven AM to two o'clock tomorrow afternoon, we're going to have an open court session. You have the opportunity to come meet my staff. We have some food, I understand, and perhaps some prizes. We're also going to be having a regular Tuesday docket as well, so if you want to come in and see what exactly does the court look like when it operates, welcome, come on, we can do that. I also want to talk about briefly here, some of the challenges and opportunities that we have in front of us going forward. One, it's always going to be having to build public trust. And another problem that is not unique to Wheat Ridge and is a very difficult one, it's like trying to tack jello to a wall. That is people experiencing homelessness. It's very pervasive, it's in our courts, and struggles with that are our community court. We've been doing it now for, since a little bit before I, I came on board. Unfortunately, we're not getting a lot of engagement from folks. We're not getting those people to show up in our courthouse, and where we are seeing our homeless population sadly, at the jail, and they fail to appear, and they appear in front of me. And so that's, I don't, there's a multitude of reasons why this likely, why this problem likely exists, but I'm really going to hang it on a behavioral health crisis. As far as substance use issues and mental health issues, those are, that afflicts that population to an unbelievable degree, and so that's what contributes to a lot of that. Those are some of our challenges that we have with that. Additional challenges that we have are changes with the law. Unfunded legislative mandates on the court, that's a big issue. I'll take you back in time for a little bit, debtor prison reform, mandatory custody court-appointed counsel, I don't think that's a bad thing. People should absolutely have access to an attorney, especially when they're in custody. Here's one that I don't like, and nobody does frankly, in any court system as well, I see. The mandatory personal recognizance, the thefts less than three hundred dollars, and that don't have a state court equivalent. That is sadly the majority of cases that come in before the municipal courts. What does that mean? That means you get arrested on a warrant, and think of this as a revolving door. You get arrested on a warrant, we have to see you out of the Jefferson County Jail in forty-eight hours. That's one of these new mandates also as well. We see them within forty-eight hours, and the majority of those cases, I am required to impose a personal recognizance fine, which means that the individual doesn't have any skin in the game. They just sign their name on their promise that they're going to come to court. And with that population of homelessness, they're out and they're back out on the street, and then they get picked up for another warrant, and it's that revolving door that's just getting picked up. They don't ever resolve their cases, they never set them for trial, and there certainly isn't any sort of guilty plea or predisposition. So it's this revolving door because of the personal recognizance. We have, it's very difficult to get those folks to come, show back up in court. Additional issues, twenty twenty legislature ended what are called OJWs, outstanding judgment warrants, that's what this means. Back prior to twenty twenty, you get a traffic ticket in our courthouse. You come in, you plead guilty, you get a point reduction, you impose a fine, you don't pay that fine. Well, back then, the state of Colorado would put out a hold, an outstanding judgment warrant. Not a warrant for their arrest, it's a warrant on the license, for lack of better words. Your driver's license got suspended, that OJW was the mechanism that got you to pay off your fines and fees. Twenty twenty, the legislature did away with that, said, nope, we don't want OJWs. So what is the effect of that? The effect of that is folks in the state of Colorado get a traffic ticket, go in and plead guilty. They don't pay their fine, there is no recourse. In other words, perhaps no incentive to pay their fines whatsoever, because we can't do anything beyond that. So the legislature did that in twenty twenty. Other issues that popped up from twenty twenty-two, the automatic mandatory sealing of records. Creates a little bit more work for the courts and a little bit more of a burden, but that's just fine. And I mentioned it a little bit ago when I was talking about those PR boxes, the forty-eight hours. That popped up really about twenty twenty as well, where if someone gets arrested, the courts are obligated to see them within forty-eight hours of their arrest. Or if you don't, then they're required to be released again on their own recognizance. That's difficult in a smaller courthouse like ours. For example, what happens if you get picked up on a Friday and arrested, taken over to Jeffco? We don't have a court staff to be able to see you on Sunday, so that means on Sunday you're likely just getting released and with an order to report back to our court in thirty days. And again, sad to say, those numbers aren't great in convincing that population to show back up. Those are some of the challenges that we face. But I'll leave it at that. Bottom line is, we have an open house tomorrow. Our court is very strong, is very capable, and we have a lot of room for growth going forward into the future. Thank you, everyone, for providing me this platform, this opportunity, and to pull back the veil to let you know what's going on in your courthouse. Thank you very much. Does anyone have any questions?
Do we have any questions from council? I don't, oh, Council, hold team.
Thank you so much. Really appreciate the detail and understanding, you know, what's happening and the work that's been done. I really, in particular, appreciate the increased coordination between the police department. I think that's really impactful and meaningful. I have a couple of questions. My first one, I'm just really curious, I love me a good data table. And so the summary of key statistics that you provided, the numbers are just kind of wild in some, I mean, there's like pretty significant like swings in some of the numbers. And I'm just curious, like what, you know, just looking back in the last couple of years, like what would, what are you attributing to some of the, the changes that we're seeing in the, the data that's presented here?
And hit the button. I think it's also some of the types of cases that we had. So when I first started up, my predecessor was doing a lot of court supervised or the probation stuff, so instead of sending him over to probation, they'd set him for reviews consistently, like every sixty days or something like that. And so on our docket at that time, we had a lot of these open cases that were set for reviews in our courthouse. As I said before, my focus has really been to try and make sure that I utilize our probation department, because why else have one, right? And so some of those numbers that you're going to see wild swings on were because I ended up getting rid of a lot of those court review dates and just sending it over to my probation department. And if there is a problem, I'm going to trust my probation officer to write up a report, and then I can have them brought back in before me. So that might be one of those areas that you're noticing on there.
Great, thank you. My second question, I'm just curious, jury selection in the city? So is it, is it just pulled from Wheat Ridge residents?
Yep, that's, that's exactly right. And so fortunately, we've only had to bring in, actually, we didn't have to, we ended up resolving it in the last year, the night before trial, actually. The trial resolved the night before, so we were able to call off those residents from having to come back in.
Okay, all right. I've always really wanted to actually get picked for jury, and I've only been called twice for jury duty. I'm like, come on, I actually want it. And then when you were talking about your interactions with our unhoused community, and you know, you were portraying, you know, just that there, I think you were just saying that there was like a lot of drug and mental health issues. I just want to kind of get some, maybe a little bit of like staff clarification, because I feel like what we're hearing from our homeless navigators that isn't necessarily like the prevailing characterization. Is it really more that, like, the population you're interacting with? I'm just trying to kind of reconcile slightly different narratives that we're hearing here.
So it's the type of unhoused community that's coming in before the court, because Cory and Maddie are likely having interactions with folks who are not getting wrapped up with law enforcement. And so the ones that do, it's, it's a lot of theft cases, a lot of drug paraphernalia cases. Those tend to be the two prevailing types of charges that come from them. So I absolutely believe Cory and Maddie when they say that, because they're interacting with folks that are just not from our courthouse. They're dealing with everyday, common folks that are out there that are afflicted with being unhoused, so. So I think that's really the differentiation.
Okay, yeah, I just, I thought that was important to clarify, because I think sometimes there's a pervasive, you know, misunderstanding in our community that when we're talking about unhoused people, that we're, you know, fairly ubiquitously talking about people who are struggling with both. And we recognize that there's a huge population that is unhoused for completely other reasons, so I just want to kind of clarify that.
Identifying the folks that find themselves wrapped up with law enforcement.
Awesome, thank you. This is great. I love, I really enjoyed the in-depth understanding. It's probably the most I've ever learned about the, the court and the court systems. So really helpful. Thank you, and thanks for hiring good staff.
And I actually wanted to bring something else up that was actually really interesting, and I neglected to put it on my notes here. When you talk about being able to focus on the community and community issues, I actually had something, and if you walk back by my office sometime, take a look at my door. We had, we had an individual, she was unhoused and was living out of her car, and ended up getting a no proof of insurance ticket. So, you know, you make what decisions you need to, you know, when, when you're down on your luck. So she had no proof of insurance, comes in. That particular charge, if there's a conviction for a first-time offense, I'm required to impose no less than five hundred dollars, no more than a thousand dollars. So five hundred dollar fine for someone that's unemployed, living out of their car, can't even afford to buy insurance to begin with, might as well be a million dollars. And so in this particular case, this individual came in, she pled, and I authorized her the ability to complete community service and lieu of paying off that fine. And I always tell folks, and it's usually to the tune of about twenty dollars an hour, because that's roughly what the city and county of Denver's minimum wage is, roughly about twenty bucks. So that's how I get to that number. So she says, thanks, no problem. She doesn't get it all done in time, she comes back, asks for more time, absolutely no problem, she ends up getting it done. About a month later, she walked into our courthouse with a bunch of cupcakes and a card for me and my staff. And thank you, thank you so much, I'm no longer unhoused. And she said, my volunteer work over at, at the ARC landed in me getting a full-time job. So I've never had a defendant come bring a thank you card into me ever, let alone go out and buy some cupcakes for me and all, all our staff as well, so. That's, I think, highlights one of the methods that you can focus on as a community court, the community a lot, a lot more closely. That exemplifies that, I believe, so. But yeah, if you walk by my office, you can see them taped up on my door outside.
That's excellent. Counselor Akada.
Thank you, Judge. Thanks for the presentation, and I'm looking forward to the open house tomorrow. I'm going to be there at the second half of it, so thank you for mentioning that here. In the document, we, we saw a success rate that, that I think you did a good job explaining, like, like the rationale behind it. I'm just wanting to make sure that I'm defining properly in my mind the edges of that success rate. That success rate is all the instances of, of, of times when a warrant wasn't needed to get them to appear to court, is that right? Or maybe that success rate is just court appearances for that, for that group.
I think that, I think the metric you're looking at is probably how many open cases there are versus closed ones. And so if you're taking a look at those numbers, when you get to the percentage wise, and Roxanna was just telling me this last week, I didn't even realize those numbers were looking that good. If you're in the state court bench, you get evaluated by the judicial, by Judicial Performance Commission, and they want to see that number, correct me if I'm wrong, at a hundred percent or higher. And so that's how they get evaluated with those. And so if you take a look at our numbers on there, I was astonished to see, I'm at a hundred and twelve, so.
I had a question about that number as well, but the, the number actually I was, I was looking at was a six percent rate, a totally different metric. So I don't, I don't mean to take it away from the hundred right there, but, but in the challenges section, a six percent success rate on, on, I think, a community court. Would you mind explaining a little bit more about, about the boundaries around that number?
Yeah. We get ten people cited into community court. We get 10 people cited into community court. I think our numbers for people that show up for just their initial appearance, on average, were about one to two people were showing up out of that 10. Then in addition to that, the community court is also geared to get them, you know, resources, get a driver's license, find their versatility, so that way we can ideally, you know, maybe get you employed. Because without those things, you can't do that. Well, that requires them to then return back to court after that to hit those bench blocks, I guess you could say. It's difficult bringing in them in on their first appearance, let alone on their second and third or fourth. So I, I think that's what that number takes a look at.
That makes sense. That explains the challenge there, too. So I appreciate that, thank you. The, in that same area, was talking about the homeless and housing navigators, being able to meet those individuals at the, at the county jail. The timeline seemed to be unclear in there. It seems like, it seems like that must be a recent development, a recent thing that occurred. Do you have any specifics you can share with us about when that happened?
Sure. So that really just kicked off, I want to say about six weeks ago for us, because we were taking a look at our community court challenges and then saying, and recognizing where are, if we're not seeing them at community court, where are we seeing them with great regularity? And the sad reality of that is, is at the jail. And so how it essentially functions is it's subject to Cory and Maddie, that's our homeless navigators, to their availability because they've got their own work on a day-to-day basis out in the community. But in the morning, Jeffco Jail contacts us and says, hey, we've got John Doe here. And you can typically recognize just from taking a look at the face of the summons whether or not that person is likely unhoused because our officers write transient at the top where their address is. So our staff can take a look at that and say, okay, looks like we likely have someone that could utilize your services. They email them out and we usually see them at three o'clock in the afternoon, so we tell Cory and Maddie, hey, if you can get out there before three o'clock, if you can, if you can do that, great, we got someone out there that you can actually interface with and maybe see if they do need access to any of the resources that they are.
That's very helpful, thank you. My last question, to follow up on what Counsel Holtine mentioned in some of the statistics here. In the case closure rates, I noticed a significant increase over the past four months, the last four months that I mentioned, your June through September. I think that's a great contributor to the 112% that you mentioned. I was trying to cross associate, I don't, I did see an increase in cases during that period of time that might, that might help understand that rate a little bit better. I know the photo radar appearance appeals are starting to, are going to start this month, so that timeline doesn't work. I'm curious if, if there's anything, any major component that can be pointed out that would explain that increase.
Yeah.
I can answer that question. I can answer that question if you don't mind.
Yeah.
It's just, when I first got there, I, first plan of action is to run an open case report, and I don't think that had been done prior to my coming here. And it was just something that I've done in every court that I've worked at, just figuring out if there's open cases, if they should be open, if they shouldn't be, just sort of auditing. And that's the increase in numbers is just finding cases that were on the shelf that shouldn't have been, that should have been closed out or could have been closed out, addressing matters that, like the judge said, with warrants that maybe needed to be reviewed or whatever, and then those go away, like if, if he doesn't re-up the warrant, just, just reviewing matters in that capacity. Also, I think that just created a lot of closing cases that were sitting out there that shouldn't have been sitting out there on the shelf. So that's the deep increase, but the goal is always to have it be 100%.
Awesome.
And then on those charts, the first chart is just how many cases we actually receive each month, and then just running the, the numbers and the totals overall. The second one is, I believe, is the revenue received from the court for fines, not all of the costs, but most of them. And then the last one is the court closure, the case closure.
Awesome, thank you very much.
In addition to that, it's not nearly as much as the closures that Roxanne was talking about, by doing her case audit. But in addition to that, since utilizing probation, when I, when I came back in, our jurisdiction is limited to one year. And so about a year ago, I really started using that probation, so you're going to start seeing those numbers also increase as they're, okay, our jurisdiction's over, we're closing those cases out that were placed on probation a year. So that, that contributes a small amount to that, but that's also going to contribute to it.
Awesome, thank you very much.
Counsel Martel.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, Judge, for being here and for the presentation. I, I wanted to actually clarify something you mentioned. You talked about the theft under $300 and the requirement of personal recognizance release, is that the right word?
Personal recognizance bond.
Bond. And you were explaining the revolving door effect of that. Is there a way that those thefts under $300 become cumulative and at some point it reaches $300, or is it truly a case-by-case revolving door?
It's a case-by-case revolving door.
I thought so, but I thought I'd clarify. Thank you.
Counsel Larson.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, and I, looking at the staff memo today, I had a question under the, it looks like that's on page six. It says execute Tyler Technologies' contract and then something called Colorado Statewide Internet Portal Authority. It's kind of a long description for, I believe, well, why don't you help us, you know, understand what that is?
That'll be for Roxanne.
The new court software system, is that what you're asking about?
Yeah, it says, actually, the Tyler Technologies' contract. So I assume that Tyler Technologies is the firm that provides the platform?
Yes, that's correct. So Tyler Technology and then.
What is it used for?
It's going to be used for the, we're replacing ADG. So we're using, we're going to be using, having a more internet and web-based software, court software system that'll do so many more things than the one that we have now will do. It's a very, ADG is a very antiquated system that we're trying to get away from, and it's also, I think, the end of its life, I think that they don't, they're not going to be supporting ADG anymore. So moving forward, we're trying to, it's going to be a lot of, just like I say, web-based and doing a lot of things of doing paper-on-demand, and it has a probation module, it has, it has all the things that unfortunately ADG doesn't have. It'll allow us to function at a better capacity.
And is this something that is, is required?
Well, yes, we're transferring to all new systems with the city of Wheat Ridge, so.
Yeah, my question is, is this something that all of Colorado is adopting?
No, it is not. It is something that we vetted numerous court software systems for Wheat Ridge. And we, prior to me even being here, they had one selected prior to me coming aboard, and we started the process midway through, I guess, over, and decided to go a different direction just because this one offers so much more than the, the previous ones that were selected.
Well, it sounds like quite an improvement.
It's going to be, yes, thank you.
All right, any other questions from counsel? I believe Mr. Dahl had a question.
Opportunity to, to ask the judge if, you know, I plugged the fact that I really stress council members to come to court and see what happens. Now, I realize you've got your open house tomorrow, but I wanted to ask you if you could tell the council, sort of what the court schedule on a weekly basis is. If I'm a council member and I want to come and see some real action, or I just want to see a lot of defendants, because I know some days you're seeing a lot of defendants for a very short amount of time, and other days you're seeing fewer defendants for longer. I've myself kind of lost a grip on what happens each, each day during the regular week, but I think counsel would be interested in hearing that, and it helps us encourage them to, to show up and watch you in action.
Okay, great question, thank you. I neglected to bring that up. Our busiest days, and best days, if you want to come in, is going to be Tuesdays at one o'clock, and Wednesday mornings, starting at 8:30, we have a docket at 8:30, 9:30, and 10:30. And then on Wednesdays at 1:00. And as far as any sort of in custody videos, that's actually something that you, if you all wanted, call up to our front court desk staff. We do all of those by video. They don't actually transport the prisoners out to, out to our courthouse. They appear in custody on a video screen on Jeffco. So you all can sign in and watch that, and those are typically called up at about 2, if you sign in about 2:55 in the afternoon on a day that we have someone in custody, sign in and watch it. We're typically handling those cases pretty quickly. We're usually done by about 3:05, 3:10 on those matters. So it is a pretty quick courtroom, and you could do that from the comfort of your offices or home or wherever else. Just call up my staff up at the front desk, check to see if we have anyone in custody that day, and if so, can you get the Microsoft Teams link? See what happens out at the check.
All right, any other questions? Well, thank you both for being here. We've got a very efficient, great court system, so we're looking forward to the open house tomorrow. It sounds like a few of us will be there, so thank you both for being here, and we will see you tomorrow.
Sounds good.
Thank you. All right, we will go to item number two, which is drone regulations. Mr. Dahl, or Mr., keep calling Mr. Dahl. Mr. Goff, do we have a presentation on that?
We do, we do. Thank you, Mayor. I'll have those folks come up here. So for our tenured counsel, you heard this item at a couple of study sessions last year, but for the new folks, it's coming back with some more specific recommendations on what the city can do and cannot do if, if you choose to regulate the use of drones in our community. So we have Mr. Dahl here, who drafted the memo for you, and our police department, who has helped with the research and has to actually enforce this when we get complaints. So Mr. Old, do you want to start out, or?
If I could, thanks. We have Division Chief here, we also have Sergeant Bowman, who presented to the council, some of you will remember that in the spring, I forgot, I think it was May, was it? Was it May? Okay, fair enough, fair enough. And counsel at that session, and I think one further session, I remember zooming into that session, so I was in person for the, kind of the second session where we went through some of this information and got a sense from counsel, really a consensus to, okay, bring ideas to us, bring options to us with kind of a range of risks associated with them. Risk primarily, honestly, around preemption, because of course you have the FAA and you've got the federal government really regulating airspace, not the state, pardon me, very much. But, because usually our preemption battles with the state of Colorado, and that, that battle's never going to be over, I don't think. But the good news, there's good news and bad news. The good news is the preemption battle isn't with them this time, instead it's with, with the feds. And the FAA has always taken a very, very strict approach to their jurisdiction, what's happening in the air. And there's some, there's some room to, really, for the, the city to operate. So the intention of this memo was to kind of give you that, kind of refresh you on that background for kind of where we were and what we learned from Sergeant Bowman primarily last time he was in the room, about what this, this arena, this rapidly developing arena is. And so I'll, I'll not spend a lot of time on the beginning parts of the memo, but I will say that, you know, many cities across the state are regulating drones to, to a greater or lesser degree. You'll notice attached to the memo is a kind of a summary of six or eight different approaches, some from Colorado. I personally think that what we see, and I think it's Orlando and Charleston, actually kind of match up more or less with the recommendation I'm making. But I wanted to make that point, that you see regulations across the board. Much of the time, when we observe, well, Lakewood's doing this, let's do it, too. And that's, that's usually not a big consideration about, well, gee, is there more or less risk? It's more about, well, just social policy-wise, that's something we want to do in Wheat Ridge versus what Lakewood's doing. Here, I think it raises the, the question of kind of the level of exposure, I guess, to preemption. And very honestly, how active and involved in the operation of drones and people operating drones does the city want to be today, tomorrow, next year, 10 years from now? And I say that not to be dramatic, but to point out that I think the city's interests may well shift and change over time. And like any other regulation, you always have the opportunity to do more or to do less as time goes on. We're constantly amending the code to add things and actually to take things out sometimes. So any decision you make, any kind of guidance you give for us to bring an ordinance back to you, is not the end of the discussion. It's not the end of your role. It's probably just the beginning, very honestly, and that's the way it should be. But I wanted to kind of articulate that so we don't feel as if, gosh, we're making a decision for the ages here, we've really got to worry about it. There's, there's room to, to, to move. A couple of the points I wanted to make, and then I want to go through very quickly this little list of things. Then I would like Sergeant Bowman and DC to, to tell you anything they think about sort of what would be useful for the city, what issues they're seeing, and how these tools match up with, with what, with what they're seeing. Let's see here, varying degrees of risk. Well, I'm over on page three of the memo, and I boiled down what I thought were either low or medium risk from a preemption standpoint, tools. Many cities, you'll notice, it's, it's all on that one page, many cities involve themselves in sort of nuisance, nuisance and privacy issues. People flying a drone over your backyard with a swimming pool, kind of thing. People fly, and this came up with Councilmember Weaver was concerned about drones and how they affect animals and livestock, and kind of hazing of, of animals and livestock. Noise, event and crowd safety, we've probably all been to an event where there have been drones flying around, and maybe it's just mildly distracting and maybe it's something we should be more concerned about. So these are all things where we have, we've got trespass, we've got existing code sections there, they're all in, it looks like chapter 16, is the sort of nuisance to certainly conduct harassment kinds of, of code sections. And it would be possible for us, I think it's fairly low risk, for me to go through each of these code sections existing and incorporate, you know, harassment by drone. I don't have that full language in my head, but that's not what we need for tonight. I'm assuming that if you give direction for that, then we can, we create that. That's sort of one category, and there's another couple of categories. Unsafe operator, persons under the influence of alcohol, marijuana, that I think is something, again, that's fairly, fairly low risk and it's well within kind of the local control that cities have. Location, this is a big issue, and I really would, I want to invite the, the police department to speak to you about that. I think they'll be a lot more informed and help you think about what areas might be areas you would want to preclude. I came to the conclusion from reading the materials that there may be cities that say no drones in residential zone districts, and I think that's overbroad and I think we would get preempted there. But I think it's, it's safe territory, or as safe as it is today, to talk about specific city, you know, city parks, rights of way, event centers, you know, specific locations where you have a safety need that drones would really potentially interfere with. If I were flying a drone up and down Wadsworth, it's, you know, confusing enough, right, to drive up and down Wadsworth. Mr. Goff, I, I had to do that, had to do it. So location, I think, is, is on the table for you. For enforcement, consisting municipal court would be fine, the, all these things would be ordinance violations, and we certainly could use the administrative enforcement procedure, which is a lot more streamlined for, for much of this. As well as, lastly, the emergency authority of the chief of police to, to promulgate a restriction or impose a restriction in a specific situation or for a specific time or event, the best analogy I can think of is fire bans. You will often have a police chief's county sheriff saying, okay, because of the conditions here, I'm going to issue a fire ban that's, that is kind of time-specific. And I think that that's something, too, that we, we have the right to do. There are other regulations, as you see, and principally, when you go through the, what other cities are doing is a permitting system. You want to fly a drone, you're going to have to get a permit. You want to fly a drone, you're going to have to get a permit. Not impossible, but I'm concerned about how the FAA would think about permitting air operations. And I get it, that there, with a drone of a given, smaller size, recreational drone versus commercial drone, you might be able to get there. There are cities clearly that say, if you're going to do filming for, you know, producing a movie or you're filming, you need to get a permit from us. And it's not impossible to set up a permitting system here at the city, but then we're going to have to have staff devoted to that. And, you know, walking around finding people are flying drones, show me your permit. That's, and again, now you're hearing kind of a personal preference, and mine, my preferences aren't relevant, it's yours. But my, my reaction to that is perhaps that's, the size of the problem doesn't, doesn't demand that level of regulation, because that's a commitment of time and resources of the city that's proactive rather than reactive. Most of these other tools are kind of reactive to behavior. But that would be proactive to set up a system. That's my thumbnail sketch, but I'd really appreciate if DC and Sergeant Bowman, you could add anything that you want, and I especially would be interested in your thoughts about location restrictions. But anything's on the table.
I think as far as...
Sorry. Sorry. I think as far as restricting location, I mean, I'm not seeing a lot of drones being flown from city parks. If we, if we do, if you do choose to add an ordinance that restricts flight from within a city park, it's going to be takeoff and landing only. You know, like an example that we use is Hayward Park, right outside the city building here. Typically, you can't take off or land there, but there's nothing that prevents you from taking off from your backyard and a private residence across the street and traversing over the park, because that is, once again, that, that's navigable airspace that's controlled by the FAA. So I, I know that other agencies have, have designated, just like dog parks, they've designated parks as drone flight areas. There's, there's what they call a, the FAA has FRIA, the free zones, where you're not required to have a remote ID or any of that stuff. So they're spaced. I think Chatfield's one, there's one up in Broomfield. So I think that, that, I think there's certainly options, depending on the direction that you want to go and how much you want to restrict flights from certain areas.
Just to add to what Sergeant Bowman offered is, and, and this has something of a, of a personal nature, but where some of this came from was some of the, some of the farm animals being, being buzzed and, and it really impacting their quality of life, I suppose, is the way I would put it. Having recently inherited a farm, I'm recognizing that it's, it's a little bit more than just talk. It is really actually a thing, and, and these animals are really impacted by some of those things, and some of the presence of those, those drones just a few feet over their head, and it creates a lot of anxiety in the animals. So some of the other things, though, I, I really would want to talk about here is the enforcement aspect of it. Of course, we, it's, it's an imperative that we, it's great to have an ordinance, but it's an imperative to be able to enforce that ordinance appropriately and with some, I think some flexibility. Just hearing what the, the judge was saying earlier, I think that really spoke to me about the importance of having some flexibility for him to, or the courts to identify this, that, or another thing through the, through the vehicle of the police in our responses to that. Something else I would also want to comment on is the emergence, the emergency authority. And I'm trying to see how this would interact, but for those of you who recall a couple years ago when we had the, the triple fatal on I-70 at Wa, at Ward Road, one of the things that we had some great challenges with were the great many people that just privately were putting their own drones up and into the space while we were trying to map the area, but also do a number of different things, figuring out safety issues. And just as an example, we had backups 10 to 15 miles in either direction, and we needed to actually provide emergency services to some of those folks waiting, waiting in their cars. We had two medical responses that we had to navigate and figure out, and we used, it was, we were brand new with the drone program, but we used, I think it was actually the first time we used the drone, but we used the drone to actually identify some of those cars that needed responses from our officers that were waiting. So the ability for the chief to identify very specific times and for us to be able to say, we're going to restrict this area for this moment in time, seems like a very important aspect to this, to this ordinance. That's all I have, sir.
Terrific questions. Counsel for any of us?
Counsel, um?
Thank you, Mayor. One question I did have is, so we talk about the 400-foot max height, but there's nothing that specifies a minimum. I saw that California had a minimum for, for people, but I'm sure, like, in the commercial, you know, with the, with the, being registered, is there kind of a, a minimum that, that you try to maintain generally, say, over people, or like, say, you're flying over parks?
So you, you're correct. The maximum flight altitude is 400 feet unless you have to go higher than that to, to avoid an, an emergency, you know, something else coming into your airspace. There's no minimum height in Part 107, which is the commercial part of this, which is what all of our pilots, anybody that does real estate, that's the blanket that they fly under with the FAA. Recreational, there, there's no posted, there's no posted minimum height either. So Part 107 pilots and the recreational pilots through the FAA trust exam, they're, they're taught to not fly directly over people, but they're not taught to fly, keep a certain distance from them. So unfortunately, and that, that would be something that the FAA would have to put in place through their Part 107 and their trust training.
And then, Jerry, if, if, if we were to consider something for a minimum, if it applied only to recreational, with, you know, to hobbyist, would that be something that would be?
A minimum flight elevation?
Well, yeah, I'm just thinking, like, I don't typically would assume, like, you're not going to see issues from professionals that have licenses. They're not going to jeopardize, you know, trying to see how low they can buzz somebody. It's going to be more from the hobbyists that are flying too low because they just kind of don't know what they're doing.
Yeah, and I agree with that 100%. Part of the big issue is, I, I've taken, I, I've been Part 107 for almost six years, so I've also taken the trust exam. The trust exam takes about 10 minutes to take if a recreational pilot decides to even take it. And I think it's a lack of knowledge. It's, it's kind of like, just like a remote control toy, right? We're going to go out, we're going to fly, we're going to see how fast it will go, how low it'll go, how close we can get to this and that. So I think it's just a lack of knowledge. Or, in some cases, a blatant lack of respect for other people's property, or, you know, like Division Chief Kellogg said, you know, buzzing animals or getting too close to stuff, so. So I think it's a lack of knowledge. But as far as minimum height, I would, like, I, I would, I'm not quite sure how well that would work. Like, I'm not sure, like, if we set, if we set a, if you were to choose and set a limit of 50 feet from this or that, what, what vehicle are we going to use to measure that? Were they within 50 feet? Were they 55 feet? Were they outside of their parameters? So I think that's a great point, but I'm not real sure how, how we would measure that.
Counsel Larson?
Thank you, Mayor. And looking at the city attorney's memo here on the nuisance and privacy section, I did, the, the questions come up, first off, on, on amending City Code Section 1646, which is trespass. And trespass talks about property, and, and it sounds like, as I, as I read that section of the code, it sounds like that is specifically aimed at somebody entering and physically walking through property or into somebody's house or, or backyard. I'm not sure how we would write something into the code that, that somehow defined when you're flying a vol, a drone over somebody's backyard, you are trespassing.
Well, you're absolutely right. The classic, you know, common law trespass is on somebody's property, and, and, but I think, I think it's possible to wordsmith that. And if counsel's interested in it, I would. And I'd probably start out by saying, if trespass by drone is when the drone is present above the property, I think I'd probably have to say below a certain height, and, and remains there for a given period of time. Now, obviously, the drone's not walking on the ground, that's not what they do, but if I'm trying to, to fashion a trespass violation by drone, that's where I'd sort of start. Okay, the drone is kind of being present in and around my property in the same way, in the same intrusive way that a trespasser is. So how do I, how do I wordsmith that? That's how I'd get a start on that. I warned you earlier that, to the extent you say yes, then the next task is to put words down and see if they work. And some of them might not, when we actually get around it trying to write it, but that's where I'd start.
And it just, it gets into this concept of, of, you know, I'm, I'm standing here in the, in my, I'm standing on the ground of my backyard, and then something's over there. Are they, are they trespassing? And, and, yeah.
It might be, that, depending upon the, the nature of the behavior, that might end up getting better written as, as a harassment, as a, you know, unlawful visual or electronic observation, you know, nuisance kind of...
Right, right.
...thing, just really depending upon the behavior you're dealing with, which might be various kinds of things.
And, yeah, it is, it seems to be pretty safe to assume that if somebody is flying a drone over your property, they probably have some sort of a camera. And so I don't know if you can automatically make the assumption that if they're flying over your property, they are observing you, and, and whether that, you know, whether that crosses over as well.
Not automatically, but, and again, this, this is why, once you give us direction, I'll, I'll take my best shot at doing some drafting, and then I'll really want to sit down with the police department and say, okay, here's kind of how these tools might work. And in the field, in practice, it may be that that behavior, whatever it is, just fits better as noise, as a form of harassment, but it might fit as trespass. And we're sort of imagining here, but, you know, the behavior and the use of the drone, okay, in this particular case, it does have a camera, or it doesn't. And that's going to lend itself to how we, you know, which one of the several tools we have to write it up will use. My goal would be to, to write alternative tools that then are the toolbox for the PD, depending upon the facts as they see them.
It, it, it does seem like this, the, the, the general sort of problem here is that it's a nuisance, and a nuisance can be something that is in your face, or something that is noisy, or is something that is observing you when they shouldn't be, or, or just basically a invasion of your privacy. And all those things kind of fall under the umbrella of a nuisance.
Yep. And if counsel's interested in doing this first bullet of one sort or another, I'll absolutely look at what some other cities are doing and see if, if they've come up with, you know, better language than the language I'm inventing right off the top of my head here tonight. And I'm sure I can make it better than that, but that's a start.
No, I, I would, yes, I would recommend that, that you put all of the years of experience you have in being a city attorney into coming up with a code that will stand up if somebody challenges. Thank you.
Yep.
Counsel Roltin?
Thank you. I have a couple of questions for the PD. I'm curious, how, how many complaints or calls do you guys, or do you feel like you're getting around this issue?
We get very few calls around this issue.
Okay.
I mean, we had the, the ones that, that occurred last year with, with Ms. Weaver's property, very, very few.
Okay, so...
So I think they become more of a hindrance for law enforcement, because we, we put our drones up for a lawful purpose. You know, you, you have an automobile accident that, that we're going to map, and people are driving by or seeing it, or it's near an apartment complex. If they have a drone, they want to see it, too.
Right.
So, and they're going to put it up. So, you know, going back to what Division Chief Kellogg said about the, the triple fatal on the highway, I mean, we actually tried to put in a temporary flight restriction through the FAA. We were able to get it. But what happens is, like, even if you're a professional drone pilot, there's a system that you check, and it will show you a TFR. And the first thing some of these pilots do when they see a TFR, they go, oh my goodness, what's happening over there?
Right.
And the best way to find out is to fly your drone over there and take a look, right? So we actually put that in, and it was more for the media, because as soon as we put the TFR in, every helicopter, there was two news choppers, they all got it at the same time in their helicopters, and they all took off simultaneous. So, but I guess the basic answer is, is not many. I mean, I've been, I've been a patrol supervisor here, I've been with this department almost 27 years, and I can count the number of calls that I've heard aired on one hand. I mean, it's not, there doesn't seem to be a lot of, a lot of concern or a lot of complaints, but all it takes is one person to change that, right? Somebody gets, engages in the wrong behavior, and it'll, it'll spike, so.
I appreciate, it helps to kind of better understand, like, the scope of the problem, just looking at it in, in that, you know, you know, the minute we start, you know, putting, and, you know, things that you guys have to enforce and then have to go through the courts, you know, how much work are we doing for two cases versus, you know, how much is actually preempting issues that, that might be coming up? I'm curious with the, and I'm hearing really clearly, and in compelling contexts, like, what the emergency authority really would mean, but how does, how does that get communicated? Like, I live right off of I-70, I don't own a drone, but like, if I were that person, like, how would I know that I wouldn't be allowed to fly my drone when all the news helicopters all of a sudden are circulating, like, over my backyard?
Yep, and that's a, that's a great question. So if you are abiding by the rules and doing everything that you're trained to do, like, it's, it's a habit for me to do it, it's a habit for all of our pilots to do it, there is a authorization network that you log into, and you either select commercial or recreational, and you, you get permission. So like, not to get too deep in the weeds, but the, most of the airspace in the city of Wheat Ridge is Class G airspace, which is unrestricted. If there's a TFR there, they would see that when they're, when they're getting their authorization, and they would go, that's someplace I can't fly, that's restricted. But like I said, some people are going to look at it and go, oh my goodness, what's happening right there? I can fly my drone two miles from here, and I can go look, so.
So if you were given the authority to restrict it, you'd be able to get that into the system that they weren't allowed to fly?
So, and that has to come through the FAA. You have to have a pretty compelling reason, because when you put that out there, every airplane in the air gets that. Southwest Airlines, United, they all get that there's a temporary flight restriction, even though we're only getting it up to 1,000 feet. Granted, we can only fly to 400, but if something happens, another drone, or something happens, we need to be able to climb out if we have to. So, but regardless of the altitude we're doing it at, all the airplanes are getting it, too. So when Southwest is flying across the country on that accident, if they were in a, if they were in a certain distance, a certain radius of that TFR, as those pilots are flying, they get an alert, and they're like, oh, what's, what's this? Even though they're flying it hopefully 25,000 feet or higher, but that's a general idea, but... but.
Well, but I mean, but the Rocky Mountain Airport, like, there, those planes are flying, like, really close through there.
Rocky Mountain is a that's a whole different area, so.
We don't have to actually go.
No, but but no, and you their airspace actually expands to the north edge of our city because of approach and departure paths.
So in a specific case, if we were to give this emergency authority to the chief, probably you would bet anything you would just assume that authority and, you know, on that incident, you wouldn't have assumed the authority, but you would have the ability to reach out to to FAA and that's the that is the pathway that you take to.
Yes, and we like we didn't, we wouldn't even need his authority to do that. Like, we as we as drone pilots have the support of the chief and the command staff that if we need to put a TFR in, that we're all familiar with the process and who to contact at the there. There's a special law enforcement number for us to call to get that.
So, sorry, I'm getting a little more confused.
Sorry.
So what is the difference? It sounds to me like you already have the authority to request that. I don't underst- like, what's the difference between us through an ordinance giving the chief the authority to restrict versus the existing ability you have to reach out to FAA?
I would offer a little bit more immediate response to any kind of violation because the FAA took the FAA took a long time to address some of the things that we were trying to address earlier this year and that brought some of these conversations up. And so if we actually had an ordinance that we could address this, that or another thing, then we would be able to address these things more diligently and immediately.
You mean without involving the FAA?
They would still be involved,
Okay.
but it would allow us to actually take care of this in in two weeks versus six months.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay, that's helpful. I think, so I'll go ahead and just give my thoughts so maybe I don't have to provide comment again. I think, given sort of the scale of what you're talking about, I mean, I do, I do think looking at some of the the nuisance and privacy, I don't know if we need to, like, reinvent, but I think if there's things we can tuck in with easy definition, I think that's important. We do have, you know, a lot of animals, both like livestock. I also, you know, if it's easy to add the unsafe operator, I mean, I think that those conditions could contribute to the nuisance issue. I'm not interested in the location limitations. I just don't think we're we're there or really have that issue. And then I would definitely support the emergency authority. So that's where I am. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Quinn.
Well, thank Mr. Mayor and everyone for bringing this up. In my other job with the the power company, I know we use a lot of drones for flying around the poles in people's backyards where it's not really not accessible for a lineman to go back and 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 look at all the materials and crossarms and ties and whatnot, you know, the condition of our of the infrastructure there. So, you know, I support exactly what Counselor Holte kind of talked about, but how, Jerry, would we make sure that, you know, guys, because these are going to be air contractors, not XL Energy folks, that the contractors that would go back and fly these, I don't know how far they can fly without being in line of sight of it. I don't know how big these things are, but I do know that technology, we're using a lot of it, especially in the wildfire areas, which I think we have a little bit of that here on the west end of town. And so I just want to make sure that the harassment, you guys don't get calls for a legal thing. And now you guys have got to go out and check this and everybody's, you know, we're not chasing our tail. And kind of that's it. I mean, the that technology is coming along. I've seen people use it for checking the roofs after a hailstorm, vegetation management folks use it to see about, you know, the poles, you know, the trees in the poles and whatnot. So just want to make sure, you know, we we don't write something up that people are going to be getting calls on.
We can, I I know we can draft around that. To begin with, XL and the other companies have easements in the ground and and those easements extend up to to include, you know, the facilities that are built. So I'm sure that's language I know we can, we can develop as an exception to the sort of generalized nuisance intrusion restriction.
Right, yeah, great.
No, I'm glad you mentioned it.
Yeah, the it's kind of interesting, but I fully support, you know, using that to chase horses and goats or whatever else is ridiculous and shouldn't be done. And then, of course, you shouldn't, you know, have a couple beers and decide you want to fly a drone. That would be kind of.
That's always a bad idea.
Yeah.
Does that happen?
The general rule for Part 107 pilots is eight hours bottle to throttle, so.
I like that.
So just thinking like what you just brought up, like, you know, XL hiring contractors to inspect poles and using thermo cameras for heat signatures and stuff, everything that you're talking about right there is all something that requires an FAA Part 107 license. So I don't know, like, I I don't know what, like, if you're going to go out and do powerline inspections, if that's something that the city's notified of or they have to obtain a permit or anything like that, like, because that'd be something where you'd have to be utilizing an FAA commercial pilot that's been trained with an active license. So that may be another avenue that may be worth pursuing for for that type of that type of commercial flight. Just a thought.
We can design that as an exception. You know, I think, I made it up, that's how that, but that's a great exception and a great way to write it.
Counselor Okada.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Dahl, I'm I'm pretty sure I I understand what the risk of preemption is, but I wanted to make sure that I understand the exact boundaries of that problem. Do does the risk of preemption, is it limited to the waste of resources and time and attention? For example, if we did a permitting thing and we got preempted, the the staff that we that we have committed to that, that would be the limit in my mind of that risk? Or is there something bigger beyond that, like a like that I might be missing?
No, there's nothing particular in preemption land. It's being being told, no, you can't do that. And sometimes we litigate, of course, all the time with the state on land use preemption, but being told, no, that's not available to you. And the the risk to the city is the expenditure of resources to defend against that preemption claim or if choosing not to defend against it or losing a defense, having to unwind whatever program we had. Not huge, but it's why we we are careful about doing things that have the the lower potential for preemption unless it's something that's enormously important to the city and it's it's worth, you know, worth pursuing. But no, there's not a sort of a punitive now, there's punitive damages kind of aspect to that.
Got it.
To end the program.
Thank you. Thanks for confirming that. The the other question that I wanted to ask comes back to the enforceability portion of it because I'm still having a little bit of difficulty on my side imagining what what emergency authority could look like. Counselor Holte, I think, pointed out some interesting aspects behind, like, well, what do you guys already have in that authority? Would you guys mind describing to describing maybe even in more detail what 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 kind of emergency authority would look like? If you had an ideal authority that you could exercise for the the ward in I-70 situation, what would it look like?
Well, from the first perspective that comes to my mind is outside of just merely informing through FAA, the FAA rules, what we would then also be allowed or be able to do, or I think maybe a little bit more proactive statement would be, we could, we could find support from the city would be to, we could put it out on our social media and say, you need to stay out of this area. Those of those of you that are commercial and or private drone users or pilots, I'm sorry. He's corrected. He's corrected me a couple times.
I'm getting the bottom of it.
He's on, he's on. I'm gonna have, now I'm gonna have to get him the wings.
He's a pilot, a guy with a fear of just a user.
Yeah. So, sorry. But, yes, so being able to actually put this out and have some authority behind that and say, hey, you need to stay out of this area. I I do, I do think the FAA, it goes out rather quickly, but there there are several steps, and you're the subject matter expert, but there are subject several steps to fill out the paperwork, get the form done, send it up to the FAA and then it comes down. Because what I do remember for that was it took us probably 45, 30 or 45 minutes to restrict that airspace. And in that meet in that, in those moments, we were trying to do a number of different things with the with the drone and it was, it was very difficult because of the many other drones in the area.
So I think the the first thing that comes to mind is, I mean, we we had a pretty serious car crash last year at 51st and Kipling and we shut down the roadway and we put a mapping drone up. And as I'm watching them fly with the mapping drone, the law enforcement drone, I see another drone come out of nowhere. The problem is, is all drones that you buy right now have to be, they have to have a remote ID. So they have to be able to, they broadcast a signal to where the pilot currently stands. Super great idea when they came up with it a couple years ago. The problem is there is no platform for anybody to log on to to see where that pilot currently stands. So the way we were able to find the drone pilot on on that scene was I was really patient and just watched where the drone was come, where it was taken off and landing with battery changes because they have to come back every 15 to 30 minutes to change batteries and the pilots will land the drone right where they can reach it so they can get a battery swap and get it back up. So as soon as we figured out where it was coming from, we sent, I sent marked patrol cars down there and as soon as they saw the marked patrol cars coming, they landed their drone and were gone before we could do anything. So like we, I even called the FAA because this is the first time that we really had this issue and we were brand new to this program. I called the FAA and said, how do I stop this? And he goes, you can't. I said, what do you mean, you can't? He goes, we can't, like, I can't give you any information on that drone. I can't get a remote ID, anything. So like, you're going to have to watch where it lands. So. So remote ID was a great is a great idea for the right purposes, but they have to follow it up with with giving, I mean, there's programs out there to track these drones. They start in the hundreds of thousands of dollars for startup costs, so. It's it's a very rich man's, it's a rich man's game. I don't know why I would want to track drones, but like, it's out there, but it's it's just so cost prohibitive that it's not realistic.
And forgive me on this, but if if we were in a situation without emergency authority and you guys were waiting for the FAA to do a TFR, wouldn't we be able to still to reach out on social media and say, hey, drone operators, there's a pending TFR, please do not?
I I think we certainly could, but I I think social media is good and bad, right? Like, I would be afraid that anybody that had a drone, whether it's a $79 Home Depot drone or a $5,000 commercial drone, somebody is going to look at that post and go, oh, my goodness, what what are they doing? Why is the city of Wheat Ridge issuing this emergency pending temporary flight restriction? I think it's going to draw in a certain amount. Just my my opinion, but.
No, and I hear and understand that. Sergeant, it seems to me like like that would be another, yet another reason why enforceability would be very low, maybe even not just limited to emergency authority, but but in general.
I think enforceability is gonna is difficult. Like I said, I mean, i- if you have a decent drone, y- the rules say you have to fly within visual line of sight. If you don't care about that, you can fly that drone two to three, four miles away and as long as you have enough battery life to get it back, like, it's not a big deal that they're not going to abide by that. So, you know, just because like, if we can't, if we, if there's no way for us to access the remote ID information and they're flying within visual line of sight, outside of visual line of sight and we're looking for a landing point to enforce it, but it's three miles away, like, it's going to go out of our visual line of sight and come back into theirs before we could actually figure out where it was coming from. And I'm not gonna, and I'm not saying that doesn't always, it's not always going to happen that way, like, somebody's, somebody's going to go and put it down, you know, within your visual line of sight, and you're going to go, oh, there it is, and then you got to figure out how to sneak up on it before you come rolling in there in a marked police car because they don't want, they don't want to be contacted. They they know the game's up and they're done playing, so.
Understood. Thank you. Just to add some comments, the I do have a little bit of reluctance in in how we could we could write this ordinance to maximize enforceability, to give law enforcement the 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 best ability to be able to present evidence, that's that's nice and clean and and, you know, apply just the just the principles of accountability to the public. I the I'm struggling just a little bit on my side in that in that regard, but I that's all for me for now.
Thank you. Counselor Snell.
Thank you, Mayor. I was thinking, Mr. Dahl, going back to your earlier comment about not going down the road of issuing issuing permits and then having to, you know, check. But one thing that came to mind for me, and I think it may fit into some of this because it's mentioned, let's see, some city parks and things like that. If if the city or if another event presenter wanted to do like an aerial shot during an event, like at Ridge Fest or Carnation Festival or something like that, I'm assuming that there wouldn't be an issue with that, even though we could potentially include city parks in the existing new ordinances.
Yeah, I think you could. There are a couple of cities that do permits for specific activities in specific areas, right? And so that's less than a, okay, if you're going to fly a drone in the city, you've got to have a permit. So it's less than a universal permit. It's more of a kind of one-time, one-function permit, especially if connected with an activity, then I assume probably the PD, and I'm interested in their thoughts, would would want to know, okay, that drone has got a permit from the city, we permitted it so that we can get some great video that we can put on the city's website because of this this event the city's doing, tree lighting or whatever, and to be able to separate that particular drone out from the others that might be flying around. If there's interest in that, I think that we could write a pretty narrow event permitting, city event permitting section. It's it's really not even a municipal court violation issue, it's it's over on the civil side to
Right.
No different than, you know, we issue permits for work in the right of way. If you want to do work in the right of way and cut the right of way to put in a sewer line, you got to get a permit and there are conditions around it. So it's not any different than that.
Right. Thank you. I was thinking like the pilot or the, you know, photographer, whoever he is tied to whoever's putting on the event and it's pretty cut and dried just from that aspect, but I appreciate that. Thank you.
So just one one piece on that, if I if I can add it. So that that's something that's going to be, the the intent of that flight is commercial. So once again, that's going to require the Part 107 license. So I think if you're going to go that direction and and have a permitting process for that type of stuff, I mean, part of that process would need to be verifying the Part 107 license if and make sure that they have insurance for their flight, that their flight's insured. I think that would be something I I would recommend that you put in there as well.
Any other questions? Counselor Holte.
Thanks. Sorry, there's enough here. Under the nuisance and privacy, there's a the middle bullet, the event and crowd safety and it said new code section. Can someone address a little bit more what's intended there around what that interface would be? I mean, if we're writing a new code section, I'm a little hesitant for this to embark on that. So I guess I'm registering hesitation to bring in a whole new code section for something that is really not a huge issue. So I guess first off, I'm really reluctant to move forward with that, but I am also So I guess first off, I'm really reluctant to move forward with that, but I am also sort of curious what was intended there.
I'm curious what the police department would add, but my intention in writing that from looking at just the whole raft of ordinances, restrictions around use of drones during an event, and such as to, drones would create a stampede of people, but, you know, use of drones hovering over an event, if you're at a Red Rocks concert and there's a bunch of drones. There probably are a bunch at Red Rocks concerts now increasingly. Having said that, what we've heard is that we don't have that many violations, or we don't have that many issues that would call out for that. So yes, you're right, it would be a new code section, that's the kind of situation we'll be designed to address, but are we having problems with that kind of situation now? If there's not a problem now, then we probably don't need it.
That, I think, mostly came from me, from an experience I had when I was in Urbana, where we had a man in the park around the Frisbee Golf area, and he was flying drones at the people, he was hitting people with the drones. And so this was, this is part of where, it was a very, it was an interesting day, we'll put it that way, but it was, I just never would have thought that would have been a thing, but, so.
Would that then fall under, like, other aspects of this in terms of like disorderly conduct or harassment?
Potentially, maybe a form of assault, really, because you're striking someone, that's an assault.
Yeah.
I agree with that one hundred percent.
A projectile assault. So I think what I'm hearing, and I appreciate that, we've got alternate ways of dealing with that rather unusual situation.
Yeah, that would be something that we, that there's several places, we could charge that at several different levels, reckless endangerment at the state level, I mean, there's lots of ways we could, depending on what the conduct was.
Okay, all right, that's helpful. And then something else, how would, under the things that have been proposed here, like, would a drone show be, would that just be commercial license? I mean, I saw a really cool drone show over the summer that was pretty spectacular, but I would assume that would just be like a fireworks show, like, it would have to get permitted, and, okay.
I mean, I would assume that would be the case.
Yeah.
It's a lot of commercial use.
Yep, and that, I mean, that's a drone flying at a whole different level, that's two-hundred-and-fifty drones going up simultaneous with one person on the controls at a computer.
Well, I hope we have that problem, because they're pretty cool.
It is super, super cool.
Yeah.
It is super cool, but that would be, I think that would be a whole nother, that would be a whole nother permitting process and insurance requirements, and, because every now and then, I'm sure you guys have all seen videos where two-hundred-and-fifty drones go up in a drone show and forty of them decide to go their own direction and start crashing into things, so.
That's it. So are we okay to try and see if we have like some direction here? So do you wanna read back, Mr. Dahl, or do you want me to?
I'm happy to tell you what I've kind of absorbed from what I've heard, and that is that you'd be interested, council would be interested in seeing some draft language under the nuisance and privacy, with the exception of the event and the event and crowd safety line item, that there'd be interest, there'd be support for enhancing the emergency authority of the chief, understanding that in an emergent situation, the chief's gonna exercise authority, but it's nice to have, you know, a code section to add to that. So I see that. I see also that whatever you do, we would want to enforce, there's no point in having, that sort of goes without saying, I believe. What I'm not hearing is location-based restrictions. We didn't really talk much about unsafe operator at all. I don't know if that's, seeing anything like that that would give rise to a concern, and I did hear from Councilmember Snell, perhaps the opportunity to have a single event licensing or permitting option, probably single city event permitting license, that's a pretty narrow category, but if you wanna do something for a city event, a single permit. So to summarize, I guess I heard nuisance and privacy, absent the event and crowd safety, enforcement, emergency authority, and a single event, single city event permitting. With the direction that I draft this, work with the police department, come back to you with a draft ordinance would be.
I had mentioned support for the unsafe operator if we were moving forward with the other, because it just, it seems like that could contribute to some of the other issues there, and what did we just hear?
Heads nodding, so.
Eight hours from bottle to throttle.
Eight hours, bottle to throttle.
I mean, if that's a rule of thumb, I mean, it's, it's a danger, so, I mean, I wouldn't pursue it on its own, but if we're doing this, it seems good to tuck that in there.
And the general number that the FAA uses is point zero four for your blood alcohol levels, which is about half of what a DUI is. Like, if you've never flown a drone, I mean, it's hand-eye coordination, it really, really is, and if it's impaired, that's when crashes happen. Or you're hitting people at a.
Disc golf course.
At a disc golf course.
That's hysterical.
So I certainly think there's something to that, but I don't know what your guys' thoughts are on that and what that would look like.
I'm seeing Counselor Martel.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanna say in regards to what Counselor Snell said, I like the language that's provided under Denver, what Denver's doing for their special events, and I think that that calls out, it doesn't necessarily have to be a film permit, but the bullet points listed, I think, cover what I think Jenny was referring to as far as special events or city events. I really like that language.
Correct.
Thank you.
Do we have consensus to go with what Mr. Dahl just outlined, including the unsafe operator, and then looking at Denver's special events? All right. I see we have consensus, so looks like we're good there.
Thank you very much. We'll create a draft, we'll share it back and forth between the police department and me, and when we both like it, it will be ready for you.
All right, fantastic.
Yep.
Thank you to our police department, thank you, Mr. Dahl.
Thanks, gentlemen.
We will go to item number three, staff reports.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a couple of quick items. I left a memo on all of your chairs concerning appointment process and timeline for the vacant city clerk position. As you all know, we've had a vacant city clerk for quite some time after the passing of Steve Patrick. Our ballot question, that was on the ballots in November, just a few weeks ago, was not successful to eliminate that position. So we've outlined a process to appoint a city clerk. We are suggesting to wait through the holidays, we feel we'll get more applications if we wait till January. Focus on the place, replacement of District Three seat right now, and we have a timeline for that. The city charter dictates somewhat of this process, does not allow, it actually prohibits a special election or appointment of city clerk. There would be an appointment by the city council, so we would not do a special election. City clerk, let's see, yeah, qualifications for a city clerk are the same as a city council, has to be a resident of the city for at least twelve consecutive months prior to the effective date of appointment, and they must be a registered elector, so that's the only two qualifications. So we're suggesting that we put an application out on January 12th, with applications closing January 23rd, council interviews on February 2nd, and appointment on February 9th. So really just looking for some consensus that if you're okay with that process, if so, we'll move forward with that.
I have a question on that. Mr. Dahl, while you're here, I know we wouldn't be able to reduce the salary on that or the pay for that while somebody was in office, but being as it's empty right now, is that something we could look at?
Yeah, the charter language, it's over there, and I should have got it in front of me. I'm pretty sure it's not to reduce, be reduced during the term, that increased or decreased during the term. So the real question as well, what term are we talking about? Is it the vacancy appointment a new term, or is it just a continuation term? And I'd make, I'd be reluctant to make a guess without digging into that language a little bit, and I will do that. Sit here and guess, but honestly, there's a fifty percent chance I'd be wrong.
Okay.
Because I can see it both ways, as we all can, both G. Vacancy appointment, start a new term. The other way to look at it, we have terms here that are, you know, four years. That's how elected officials are, you know, in office here. So I'm inclined to say, if you force me to do it, that the four-year term is the term, whether or not it got filled by vacancy. I'll check a little case law and see if maybe there's a similar charter out there that's been litigated and give us a little comfort, but.
The actual language is, shall not neither increase nor decrease the compensation of any elected official during the elected official's term of office. So there is, we'll have to probably look into this further.
Yeah, that's not clear.
You know?
Okay.
So.
Do we have?
We'll check.
Thank you. Do we have consensus to move the timeline forward? Yes, we do. Okay, fantastic. Anything else?
Thank you. Just real quickly, too, we put this out on social media, but Congresswoman Patterson is holding a community resource fair this Thursday from nine AM to eleven AM at the Wheat Ridge Rec Center. There'll be opportunities to connect with agencies concerning healthcare, for housing, employment, legal and tax advice, senior and veteran resources, and much more. So this Thursday, nine AM to eleven AM at the Wheat Ridge Rec Center.
Fantastic. Thank you. We will go to elected officials' reports. Do we have any reports this evening? Counselor Holtein?
Thank you. Breaking news, the goats are at Happiness Gardens, and there's a bunch of them, and they're darling. And they will come right up to the gate or to the fence to like stare at you the entire time you're walking by. So they will be there for a few more weeks, so if you've not gotten a chance to go see the goat adorableness at Happiness Gardens, 'tis the season. And then I just, I wanna just call out to the public to help solve a mystery. Everyone loves a good mystery. I was riding my bike on Kipling Multi-Use Trail a couple weeks ago, and some unknown entity had drilled, what was it, twenty-two holes, about like four to six inches in diameter? What?
Yeah, poach holeing.
Yeah, poach holeing, like, like all over the multi-use trail, and luckily I saw them and didn't hit one, and I just wanna recognize I reached out to Patrick and Kent, and they jumped on it really quickly, they were pretty dangerous, but nobody's quite too sure where those holes came from. So if anyone has hot tips on the Kipling Street Multi-Use Trail holes, don't hold it back, because we're all really curious, and that's all I have for tonight.
Great. Any other elected officials, Counselor Snell?
Just briefly, I was not able to attend the ribbon cutting, but Friday was the ribbon cutting for Wheat Ridge Meats. I did get to go in there, I think my wife has been in there three times now in the past few days, because she has found so much cool stuff. It's a really excellent meat market, but also they have a great grocery with the meat market, and there's a lot of great stuff you can find in there for anything you might wanna cook or have, so just wanna say welcome to them, it's a great addition to District One. That's all, thank you.
Anybody else? Counselor Larson?
And thank you, Mayor, and yeah, on the ribbon cutting, we had a couple of new businesses that have started in District Four, we had some good ribbon cuttings on Friday last week. And then on Saturday, my wife and I had an opportunity to attend the Atomic Theater, and that's community theater here in Wheat Ridge at the church there at Thirty-Eighth and Wards. On the agenda at the Atomic Theater was Treasure Island Unraveled, a comedy farce about a group of theater people putting on a show, and it was, it was actually very funny. Community theater, you know, far from professional, but it was a most enjoyable evening, and I would recommend that if you see any other, they do have two more shows coming up this weekend, and if they're, the next time they're through, the Atomic Theater, that you follow them online and go to see a show.
Thank you. Anybody else?
Well, I just wanna thank Local Works for inviting me to participate in the Spark event last week, it was Wednesday night, got to join the mayors from Lakewood, Edgewater, Golden, County Commissioner Dahl Camper, and our own Val Nosler Beck, talking to a big group of citizens about running for office and our priorities. Spoke very highly of Wheat Ridge, we have a lot of great things going on. It was an honor to cut the ribbon at Wheat Ridge Meats, as Counselor Snell said, fantastic market, it's very clean and fantastic selection there. Tiny Liquors at Forty-Fourth and Field, which is right next to Pietra's, the Demott Family, just doing another thing in the city, I don't know how they find the time. And T-Birds, for those of you guys who haven't been to T-Birds yet, I went back for lunch, and then I went back for lunch again on Saturday with the family, a great family establishment too, fantastic food, great stuff going on there. We have no meeting next week, so everybody enjoy your Thanksgiving, be safe, hopefully everybody gets to spend it with some family and loved ones. And then we will be back on the first for a study session, we have Wheat Ridge 102 coming and doing their presentations, and then we are doing interviews for the District Three appointments. So anybody who's interested in District Three to that appointment, what the deadline for that is, the, I believe.
Twenty-first.
Twenty-first.
This Friday.
This Friday, so get those applications in. Counselor Larson?
Yeah, real quick, on the candidate interviews on the first, are we, are we using questions that have been prepared, or are we each coming up with our individual questions?
Weird, staff is gonna prepare questions for you for your approval, so we'll get those out to you. We wanna make sure that we're, we have a somewhat rigorous process, and everybody's has a fair, plain field, all the same questions are asked, you can obviously do follow-up questions based on what you hear during the interview, but we'll get questions out to for your approval.
Any other questions on that? All right, we look forward to that as well. Have a happy Thanksgiving. If you can find your ingredients for there, whether it be at Wheat Ridge Meats or Edwards Meats or anywhere else in the city, find it and buy in Wheat Ridge. Thank you, we'll see you on the first.